Hey, everyone. We're just a touch past 6:30. We're going to go ahead and get started here. So if we could start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening. We'll start with roll call. Everyone is here? Hello? It's gonna be a good night, Patrick. It's gonna be a good night. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. All right, we are on to communications, recognition of staff students, community volunteers. Who is first up?
Who's first?
Ah, okay. All right. Hello, go ahead.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Daniel Sennovich, a leadership student at Oakville High School.
They're trying to hook you up.
Hello? Good evening, school board members. My name is Daniel Sennovich, a leadership student at Oakville High School. On behalf of the entire Melville School District, we would like to take this opportunity to thank you for your commendable work. Your decisions and views enable the students in every building of the Melville School District to fulfill their highest potentials. On top of that, the thoughtful precautions you have taken have ensured us to stay safe during this pandemic as well. The tremendous time and hours you've given back to the schools in our district is immeasurable. So thank you for your constant efforts toward our education and making Melville a wonderful place to learn. We also have created gift baskets for each member as a token of appreciation from the whole Melville School District. Thank you.
Thank you. It's more cookies. Somebody gave us a cupcake, too. Did you see that? Thank you. Yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah, and actually Larry and I are doing pictures, too. We're gonna do some pictures. We'll be right back. All right. Who is next up? Looks like Rogers is next up.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to present to you one of our new clubs this year, the Rogers Sunshine Club.
The first thing we ever did was we did candy donations. We first delivered candy to our first responders in our community. And we sent candy to our military troops.
We are leaders. We show respect. We show kindness. And we try to spread sunshine wherever we go.
We have made sunshine notes to give to people we see doing good work around our school. Quote, "When I gave my sunshine notes, my friends hugged me and said I made their day." We made cinnamon ornaments to share with people living in Bethesda.
We wanted to celebrate our principal, Dr. Kenoey's 50th birthday. So we made cutouts of his face for every student at Rogers to participate in his birthday parade. We also made a giant yard sign so everyone would know it was his birthday.
We spread sunshine to our teachers by giving them treats to surprise them.
We made sugar scrubs to treat our teachers with soft hands and having... And with... We made sugar scrubs to treat our teachers with soft hands for having a hand in helping us learn so much.
Our goal is to brighten somebody's day within our school and community. Spread sunshine every day and everywhere.
Well, first of all, thank you to all of these young people for such a great job on their presentation this evening. And I'd also like to recognize Mrs. Sapienza, our school counselor, for starting this club this year. This is a wonderful opportunity because this is a club that is open to every student at our school. And we have a number of young people participating. This is just a small sample of the good works that they do in the small sample size of the students that are in this group. So thank you for the opportunity to share our sunshine club with you tonight.
Thank you very much. Beerbomb is up next.
Melville Board of Education and colleagues, I'm proud to introduce to you tonight a classroom and a teacher that have been an embodiment of our portrait of a graduate standards here at Melville. They are leaders within their grade level, their building, and their community. Mrs. Osborne's fifth grade class is a little more unique than every classroom in our building. They are one of the most close-knit groups in our building. They are the only classroom out of 25 classrooms at Beerbomb Elementary that have been together for almost two years. They have been looping together since fourth grade. The primary factor in this classroom is their relationship with their teacher, Mrs. Osborne. Throughout the entirety of every school day, Mrs. Osborne can be seen at every end of their classroom, immersed in their instruction and teaching concepts that will serve their students, her students, for the rest of their lives. This class mounted a campaign, a thorough and well-consistent campaign, to loop together. And after presenting to us, we granted that opportunity to them. And so each day at Beerbomb, Mrs. Osborne's class demonstrates exemplary character, persistence, and creativity on a daily basis. Each day, they continue the renaissance that is currently happening at Beerbomb Elementary. So I wanted to just give a moment to let Ms. Osborne share some words about her class that's looping together. She is.
Thank you. So I first wanted to start off, since I'm speaking to the board, about the academic benefits that we've had this year. Starting the school year on August 25th with these guys, again, it has... Day one was just wonderful. Going in, we were ready to go. I knew reading levels. I knew math groupings. I knew who worked well together. And we were just ready to start off the year, ready to go. All of their strengths and everything. And one of my favorite parts is, you know, as a teacher, you often hear the students tell you, "Well, we didn't learn that last year." Well, that doesn't work this year because I know what they learned last year since we had them all together. The academic benefits have been wonderful, but for myself, it's always all about the relationships. And we have grown so much together over the last two years, not just with them, but with their families. I feel like we are all together. I've, you know, hear about births of cousins, and I hear about brothers going to college, and new pets, and new houses, and family members. They all... Them... Their families are also a part of me also. So that has been, you know, one of the things that I really enjoy is just growing with them. You know, in our class meetings that we have, we talk about how we're a family. And during the school day, we spend more time together during the day than they do with their own families. And we'll be the first to admit that it's not always perfect. We definitely have had ups and downs. And we talk about, you know, the way we need to work together and treat each other as a family. But in the end, you know, I see the way that they are there for each other and the way that they are each other's best champions. When we're out at recess, they're all together. It's them with each other. And I just love the relationships that they've built. Looking back, I hope that they will value the time that they've had with each other. I know that I certainly will. Being together with them for two years is absolutely the highlight of my career. And they've seen me multiple times already tearing up when we talk about the end of this year. I can't imagine what it would be like without them next year. I love you guys.
Okay, next up is Melville NEA, Deana McKelvey. If she can get through the crowd.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Deana McKelvey, and I am the president of Melville NEA. And we had... Well, first, I want to say thank you to our board for all that you've done. I love that the leadership had their talking gift for you because you deserve the moon and more. And Larry and Kevin, I think this is your last regular meeting. So we... It's just been great getting to know you, and your leadership has been really important to us. So thank you so much for all that you've done. The last two board meetings, we snowed out. And so we did not have the students of the month that we were going to have. So instead, we had a prize patrol. And so on Monday, I was able to go to all four of the element... Well, all four of the schools and their parents. Sometimes their parents came and their teachers are there. So I do have some pictures of that for you. And I'm hoping that I know how to use this clicker. This side? Did I go too fast? Okay. So first was Washington Middle School, and Olivia Shone was there. And she was really surprised. Then we went to Oakville Elementary where Kareem Detovich was there. And her... His mom was able to come. And we also were able to get the principal and the teacher in the picture. Oakville Middle School, Nora Brandt. And that was... I really want to send that family photo, too. They had all their siblings and everybody, so it was really cool. And then, of course, the principals were able to have a photo op. And then Asia Alevia at Hagaman. And I do apologize if I mispronounced her name. And that was also like, I want to send them their photo, too, because they had little sibs. And, you know, I think grandma might have been there, too. So it was really neat. It was the first time we'd ever done that, and it was really fun. So without further ado, we do have two that we are going to honor in person tonight. And I'm gonna have the first one come. She's from Rogers Elementary School. So if I could have Manini come up to the podium. Manini is a... Her teacher couldn't be here tonight, but she shared with me a lot of things that I would like to share with you when my phone starts to work. First, Mani follows all the bear behaviors that are important at Rogers Middle School. She is respected by all her teachers, and they wanted me to know that this wasn't just the third-grade teachers who nominated you. It was teachers that have had you in second and first and kindergarten. They said, "Without a doubt, it should be you tonight." She's a hard worker and dedicated to her schoolwork, respectful to her teachers and classmates. And she is always positive, and she's an example for all the students at Rogers. So thank you very much, Manini. If you could just stand right here, we're gonna have a picture for you in just a minute, okay? Our second nominee or award winner tonight is from Beerbomb Elementary School. And her teacher is here today. So if both could join us at the podium, Nam. And I will let her tell you all about this very wonderful young man.
Hi, thank you. I am here on behalf of the Beerbomb team. And together, we are proud to recognize Nam Tran, who was a third-grade student in my class. Nam, just to tell you a little bit about himself and why he is so special. He's often the first to arrive each morning and greets us with a smile. He is kind to everyone. He's determined to try his best at all times. Since the beginning of the school year, Nam has shown amazing growth in all areas, but especially with his reading and his math. Nam's persistence and dedication to school have helped him meet and even surpass the goals that we're setting. With encouragement from his parents, he's even doing extra work at home. It's helping to build his knowledge and understanding of all the topics that we cover in class. And I'm so very proud of Nam. Congratulations.
That is our presentation for this evening. Thank you so much. And I know we're gonna do some photos with Larry and Kevin, which I'm excited about. Thank you, everyone, for everything.
Now, Deana said this is our... Larry and my last full meeting, and I think that's the part of the meeting that I'm gonna miss the most. Because that's why we're all here. Next up, open period for patron comments relating to board agenda items. We did not have anyone sign up. Next up, student achievement. This is my second favorite part of the meetings, where we get to go through data. Starting with Beerbomb, right? Is it Beerbomb first? All right. Good evening.
Good evening. And once again, thank you to the board for all that you do to serve our community. Larry, Kevin, thank you for your service and good luck in whatever's next. So I want to tell you... So Mr. Perkins kind of teased it. I want to tell you a little bit about the renaissance that's going on at Beerbomb. So those of you that don't know, my career in Melville actually started as a classroom teacher at Beerbomb, just for a year. And then I was promoted to assistant principal. And at that time, a new principal came in, and he was kind of picking my brain. He was new to the district, new to Beerbomb. And I said, "We have a great piece of clay here to work with." And over time, that piece of clay is really starting to come together. I want to talk a little bit. We've been able to offer just so many more clubs and opportunities. I'll be honest, in my first year as principal, we didn't offer a lot of opportunities. We just had some of those teachers that had sponsored those things had gone on. They'd retired. But we just kind of had a resurgence in opportunities for our kids. So we've got some tremendous, some outside-the-box clubs up there, including Video Game Club. I wasn't quite sure what that would look like, but it's just been a great opportunity for kids to come and have fun at school. Want to also talk about our ESAR tutoring this year that we've been able to do through our ESAR budget. I had no shortage of teachers that signed up to do this. In fact, it ended up being more than 10. But just through figuring out schedules, you know, we had to kind of consolidate. And I think at different times over the year, we've had approximately 50 kids take part in that opportunity. A big project that we A big project that we've been working on that I really think defines that Renaissance is our playground project. And, you know, this is something that we've wanted to do at Beerbomb for years and years. My first slide talked about the 60 years that we've been serving our community. I don't know if you guys have been to the back of our playground, but that playground, I think has been there for close to 60 years. So we wanted to, that's something that we wanted to freshen up. And so last spring, about a year ago, we launched a campaign to begin fundraising. And we knew, we knew playgrounds aren't cheap. We knew it was going to be somewhere between 50 and 60,000. And my PTA president asked me, how long did I think it was going to take for us to secure the funding? And I said, I'll be honest, knowing what I know about our, some of our previous fundraising efforts, I expected it to take about three years. But in eight months, we managed to raise over $50,000. And we have secured the funding for our new playground and installation begins as soon as summertime gets here. So we're looking forward to having that for next year. And a big part of that project, we're just reaching out to our, reaching out to our community. We've had so many corporate donors to our playground project, including a lot of private donors as well. I think we had some, even some board members contribute on our GoFundMe page. So if that was you, thank you. Now we're going to go through just some of our school improvement work this year. I've got some really exciting data to share. So this has been a goal at Beerbomb for a number of years and I think we've really kind of turned the tide. And that's creating a systematic approach to social emotional learning. We've done a lot of work with this over the years. In fact, I believe I was one of the last principals to speak to all of you back in February of 2020. Right before the world kind of changed before our eyes. And this is where we're at since then. So if you look, our last round of Panorama data collection in the fall of 21, we have sharp spikes across all of these domains in our students' SCL growth. So I think that's something huge to celebrate, especially given what we've been through the last two years. The other thing I wanted to talk about is our growth in math and reading. So we use iReady and I kind of set the mark as we wanted, we wanted to show one year's growth. And I want to kind of, I want to explain this because I've watched some of my other colleagues' presentations and I think we all kind of take a different approach to this. What you're looking at is the standard view in iReady. I know a lot of my colleagues have shared the beginning of the year view. What I like about the standard view though, is it's a more apples to apples comparison and I can really hone in on growth over time. So if you look at our fall benchmark data in math, you know, we have that sliver of the pie, that's about a third that are below grade level and the goal is to just make that, those red pieces smaller and make those green pieces bigger. And as you can see from our last round of data collection in the winter, we're making that happen in math. With reading, similar, similar view, I use the standard view on both of these. And there's some tremendous gains to celebrate there. If you look at that red sliver, those kids below grade level, we have pretty much cut that in half and we've almost doubled those green slivers. So we are making growth. Our big piece, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about that growth in just a second because I, a big part of my presentation tonight has to do with our work in MTSS. And this is work that's happening around the district. But I really feel like, I'm proud to say that I feel like Beerbomb has kind of spearheaded a lot of that work, just given kind of what our needs have been over time. So these are just some of the core beliefs that have driven that work. I'm part, I'm one of the elementary principals that's part of our district MTSS team. And these are the beliefs that kind of drive that work. And this is, I don't expect you to really look any, zoom in here and look at this. In fact, this is old data, but I just wanted to share an example of how we're using data. So one of the, we have so many platforms for collecting and analyzing data. We have iReady, we have Panorama. On the principal side of things, we have so many more things that we can access. But one thing that's always been frustrating for me is we've got all these wonderful tools and sometimes they communicate with each other. But I wanted to create kind of a one stop shop for our teachers to play in the sandbox and play with their data. So over the summer, I put this, this is the most complicated Google Sheet I have ever created, loaded with all kinds of formatting. And I've shared this with many of my colleagues. I know this is being used at a lot of different buildings around the district. And if you look at the right side of that, that's really where we measure growth. And I know there's a lot to take in there. But I assure you, this is something that, it makes sense to our teachers. And I, every day I open this document and since it's a Google Sheet, you can see who else is in there. And every day when I log in, I see our teachers in there playing with their data and getting excited about their data. So how that looks in practice, so I want to share a specific example with you. Pupillo told me that Kevin would get a smile out of that. So in practice, if you think about our kids from last year, our second graders, so if you think about what those second graders were coming out of the pandemic, this was their end of the year reading data. Only 43% on level. So we knew that we could not start those kids on day one of third grade, just day one, lesson one. We had to be strategic. And so I went to both my second grade teachers and my third grade teachers last year and I said, we want to try some different things. So going into the 21, 22 school year, we were much more strategic with our class placements. We were looking at what skills kids needed. That way we can make sure that we had groups that were manageable for the teacher. You know, one thing that's frustrating sometimes with, for teachers is you might have 20 kids in your classroom, but they're all over the place. So we wanted to be just smart about how we group to make sure that that teacher had manageable, manageable groups that made sense so we could get more bang for our buck. I also asked my teachers, what are you going to need to make this happen? And they came up, they kept coming to me with these things and these ideas. And I said, okay, we can do it. And we managed to fund it. And as a result, as, if you look at our last data collection, our winter iReady reading benchmark, 89% of those kids, they're not all on grade level, some, many of them are, but 89% of them are on level or on pace to make one year's growth, which I think is a tremendous achievement. Thank you. And big, big components of that work are academic and SCL interventionists. Those, those positions have been so important this year in, in working with those teachers to be strategic. Because I'm a title building, I also have the luxury of having four paraprofessionals that support that work too. And these are, that's a non-certified position. However, I have four certified teachers in this paraprofessional role that have helped support that work. Speaking to that academic interventionist, I think this was a point in mentioning, so in year one of this position even existing, my academic interventionist was named our teacher of the year, which I think speaks, and this is chosen by the staff who recognize the importance of that work. And I think that speaks volumes. And then finally, I'll leave you with this. This is a bulletin board hanging outside of one of my first grade classrooms. We've been through a lot the last couple of years, but man, where we're at today, the view looks great. So I invite you to come by anytime. Thank you.
I'm excited after that. Right? Questions? Right? Especially with colors.
This is a good meeting. It feels good, yeah. Thank you for your presentation and thank you for all of the efforts and the the creativity in how you've put things together and brought your staff together to, to build upon what you needed. And kudos to your, your PTA and your school for raising those funds so quickly and thank you to all of the sponsors, the corporate sponsors and the private donors who helped with that. I think that that's absolutely incredible. So just congratulations and thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
I would just like to thank you for your willingness to adapt, to make things work. I think quite often as educators, myself included, we fall into a rut that we can't quite get out of. We're afraid to get out of, we're afraid to shake it up. But I want to thank you for doing that and I hope we can continue to hear this kind of improvement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that spreadsheet, that's genius. Having all that data accessible in one place, that makes that data 10 times more useful. And it makes teacher time easier because they don't have to go scrambling around for it. You've done all the heavy lifting. That, and you said other schools are using that spreadsheet. That's even better. That's working very, very smarter and not very, very harder. So thank you.
Thank you. And we found teachers get excited, kids get excited about it, teachers get excited about it when that, when that box lights up green.
On your, I have a couple of questions actually. And I agree with what everybody said. Great job. On your ESAR tutoring that you're offering, is that during the day or before or after?
So that is primarily for us. I don't think we, I think we have a couple of small groups meeting before school. Because I had so many teachers offer their services, I was able to, we were able to communicate with families and say, okay, what times work for you? So some of that's before school, much of it is after school because that just worked better for a lot of our families. So we could be flexible and give families what worked for them.
And that's, that's awesome. How do you handle transportation with those students?
So that was something we were able to, through ESAR, we were able to fund transportation and we had a couple of families that thought they were going to take advantage of it, but once we kind of got into a rhythm, at this time, I don't have any families that require that additional transportation. They've been able to provide it, which we had the resource there, we just haven't really needed it.
That's fantastic. And then last, do you have any wait lists at all for tutoring, reading?
So for tutoring, no. And we do have some students on the waitlist for reading. However, I mentioned those Title I paraprofessionals earlier. And one of those paraprofessional, all three are, two are retired teachers, one of which was a retired reading teacher. And so my kids that would technically qualify for reading services that would, might be waitlisted are receiving services through that paraprofessional. And it looks a little different. And I'll be honest in that I kind of like that because typically these are older kids that have received LLI or reading in younger grade levels, but they're still behind. So that to me would indicate that perhaps that's not the intervention we should try and we should try something else. So what I've been able to provide, I'm very happy with the movement that we're making.
That's good to hear. Thank you.
Welcome.
I don't feel like I'd be doing my job if in my last full meeting, I didn't ask at least one challenging question.
You can save that for Patrick.
I think you'll have the answer. Save that for Patrick. Now, there's a lot in here that is really good, as everybody has said, as I was going through the presentation, I was pretty impressed. And I'm glad you said that that one spreadsheet had old data, so we shouldn't have gone through it because it wasn't my last full meeting. I probably would have been in that thing in detail, calling you to understand it, but I let it go. But no, you showed things really well with this as far as being able to see the growth. And the first thing is impressive is the growth. That's what we're all after. So great on that, great with explaining to us the interventionist. I love the culture side of it. The, what you're talking about isn't something that, it's only people that build culture. So you've got to have the right people, the right parents, all of that. So that is amazing to hear because when we get schools that are able to build cultures like this, they just become, they become amazing places. And so we've seen it in schools before, so it's great to hear that that seems to be the way this is going. The challenging question is going to be 89% of students are now on grade level or on pace for one year's growth. With the other 11%, what do you see as the main challenge and what is your ideas on how to improve that?
And that's, and that's a great question. And you know, typically with that other group, you know, I think it's important when you, and that's a small number of kids. And that's where you really need to dig deep on those individual kids. And I don't think there's one answer for every single one of those kids. That might be, you know, and off the top of my head, and I'm thinking about the kids that would fall into that group. Some of those kids, it might be an EL component. It might be that they've only been in the country for a short amount of time. So, you know, one blanket answer, I don't, I don't know if it exists, but what I would say is because we've kind of built out our system the way that we have, we are able to better identify those other kids and have those conversations and bring the people to the table that need to be part of that. I think identification is the key piece and because of what we've built, it's just easier to do that.
That's a really good answer. And when you don't have that many, as you indicated, it's easier to identify and to give them the resources they need.
Sure.
Which is all excellent. Always end on a positive. I love the data aspect of this. You probably know that people have been, in fact, you said you've been watching some of these, that people have been telling us about how well the interventionists have been doing. We're looking at two more years of having interventionists with the federal government helping us out with that. Things are going so well with that right now, but we need to have that data in two years. So exactly what you're doing with keeping that, I would encourage you to continue that. I would encourage everybody else to do the same. And look at comparisons between schools. So this isn't just for you guys, but I mean, as a board and everybody, look at those comparisons and you know, if Beerbomb is like launching things off, then find out what is Beerbomb doing? And try to use that. But that thing out there in two years, I think is huge for our district that we really want to come into that knowing what is it that's leading to these great gains and how do we continue that? So thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Anyone else? Great. Thank you. Dr. Kenoi? Hello, sir.
Good. This is a St. Patrick's Day I've been looking forward to for a year now, so I'm happy to be here tonight. Think about your elementary school experience. What are the things you remember? What stands out? Is it a teacher, a classmate, a field trip, an art performance? At Rogers, we believe every interaction matters. And as such, we strive to have a community where everyone feels loved, cared for, and knows that they belong. For we know that in an environment such as this, there is freedom to take risks in learning. And it's in these risks that there are opportunities for growth. And while there is much I could talk about when it comes to our learning community, I want to focus on three areas this evening when telling the Rogers story. Those areas are continuous growth and improvement in academics, access and opportunity, and sense of belonging. When it comes to academics, we want to bring about high levels of learning for all. We do this by ensuring high quality instruction and providing the support to those in need of either remediation or extension. This year, we have two academic interventionists that have been tremendous help. While we look at many pieces of data at Rogers, for the purposes of this evening, I am looking specifically at reading levels in iReady, ELA, and math. As you notice, when looking at our term two reading levels, we do have areas to celebrate and we also have opportunities for growth, notably in grade one. Furthermore, while iReady shows growth for all grade levels in iReady, ELA, and math, and I know you've had the chance to preview these slides comparing winter to the initial diagnostic, our cohort analysis shows that our first graders are once again an area of focus. In my next section, I'll talk a little more about how we respond to that data. But before moving on, know that academic success is terribly important to me and all members of the Rogers community. And we are continually honing our craft to provide a meaningful learning experience for all of our kids. To ensure that our scholars are growing as learners and thinkers, we move to the next chapter in our story, access and opportunity. As our district strategic plan states, we will ensure all students have access and opportunity to programs and services. Additionally, we want to fulfill Rogers aspirational vision of success for each person in the Rogers community. In assessing data, we look for performance gaps and problem solve to find the root cause of those gaps to then take actionable steps. For example, we look to see if a solution can be found in tier one, tier two, or tier three. Going back to grade one, for example, the most recent iReady data showed students in need of support and comprehension in ELA and measurement in math. Consequently, our interventionists and teachers meet our scholars where they are at, academically speaking, to provide them the necessary support to be successful. In finding solutions to help our scholars be successful, this is where our interventionists have made have made a huge impact. Our teachers and interventionists talk each day about student learning, especially about those gap areas, and the interventionists provide support in those gap areas. I've included two slides, and these are, these are not the amount of students they see, this is just a small sampling, but I wanted to show you the kind of data they are collecting, to show that the growth has come about because of all the work that they have done working with these children. We have two interventionists, K2 and 3 to 5, so this is one from each of those teachers. My final chapter centers on sense of belonging. I want every member of our school community to know that they are valued, loved, and are to be treated with dignity and respect. To that end, we focus a lot on the building of relationships, and one way we do that is through social emotional learning. Focusing on the whole child, we incorporate such things as zones of regulation to help make sure our kids are in the proper frame of mind to learn. A child that is emotionally regulated is ready to learn and engage. Through our work with relationship building and working with the whole child, we seek to increase the sense of belonging. In the fall, 85% of our kids felt a sense of belonging, and 78% of our staff felt a sense of belonging. Our most recent panorama data did show a slight dip in both of those numbers, but it was very, very slight. That will be something, of course, we'll take a look at to see if there's anything that we can do about that. To assist with access and opportunity and sense of belonging, we have made use of our Esser funds to increase our clubs and after-school tutoring. We went from zero after-school tutoring last year to at least 20 tutors this year, and we went from 10 clubs in previous years to 22 clubs this year. This accounts for more than half of our scholars participating in an after-school activity at our school. As the research shows, when students feel they are part of the school community, they are more likely to perform better academically and are more motivated to learn. So before wrapping up, I want to tell you about a student that highlights the three areas I've spoken about tonight. After gathering data through the initial I-Ready diagnostic at the start of the year, this particular student was multiple grade levels behind in both math and ELA. Providing this child with access and opportunity to our interventionists, as well as attending after-school tutoring, the student has advanced two grade levels in both of those content areas. Additionally, because of our variety of club opportunities, the scholar has become an active member of our school community, and I attribute much of this individual's success to all the extra opportunities offered this year. So in the end, we are a school that wants to be better than we were the day before, and I want to make sure that everybody has the opportunity to be the best version of Tonight, I've had a chance to talk about our growth and continuous improvement in academics, access and opportunity, and sense of belonging. And through your help and support, we are a learning organization that will continually improve to help carry forward the goals and objectives of our district. And it's at this time, I'll do my best to answer your questions.
I was going to let everyone else go first. Does anyone have any? No?
Okay. I'm going to ask sort of the same, so good job on all of your data and information. Oh, sorry, I'm not on. Thank you very much. So your tutoring is after-school, I saw that in your chart, and you're using Esser funds for that tutor?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and transportation is going fine with that also?
Yes, ma'am.
Great. What about a waitlist?
For tutoring?
For, for reading or math, are any tutoring?
For tutoring, we have no, no waitlist. We have had, we had so much, we had such a positive response from our teachers that we do not have a waitlist for tutoring.
Good. And to Kevin's comments with Beerbomb in terms of keeping track of data with our Esser funds and our interventionists, we are also using Esser funds for clubs, and as you just mentioned, you went from 10 to 22 clubs, and you're really seeing growth in the kids because of the clubs. So I'm wondering if there's some, I mean, we need to, as a board, document that growth also, when it comes to justifying, figuring out how to keep that in our budget moving forward after the Esser funds are gone in two years. So I don't know if you do any type of documentation, or if we could come up with something like that to remind us of that, of the good things and the quality that comes out of those clubs.
Well, and I do think that one possible data source could be the sense of belonging that is measured in panorama. When knowing that we were going to have Esser funds, but actually even before that, sense of belonging has been something that's been very important to me and to our Rogers community for a very long time. And I know, having been in all levels of the academic setting, whether it be elementary school, middle school, high school, those young people that participate in activities have a strong bond and connection to their school. It's an opportunity for them to get to know perhaps a teacher that they didn't have, and they have the chance to build a relationship with another adult, just like we saw with our Sunshine Club. It's not always clubs to have kids in it from kindergarten to fifth grade, and so to have them together has really helped build that sense of camaraderie and Rogers pride. And so I do think that panorama could be one way to assess that.
Okay. I was just thinking of the future and how we are going to be faced with possible cuts in the, you know, once we lose the Esser funds, and what we can do to mitigate those losses.
Don't lose the Esser funds. Think positive.
What?
We won't lose them. We'll find a way.
Okay. Well, we'll find, we'll lose Esser funds, but hopefully we can replace them.
Yes.
So, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Kenoi, thank you very much. I love your approach to education. I just think it, you know, it just wraps a warm hug around each and every one of the students that enter your building, and they realize that, and you know, their willingness to participate and be a part of something bigger than them is, you know, so, so inducing to growth that they can't hardly help themselves, but be better when they come out than when they went in. So, thank you.
Yeah. Peggy, that's really good points. I tend to focus on academic measures a lot, but what you said about clubs and that we need to measure that too, that's really a good point.
I learn from the best.
Tori? No, so, great. I mean, another thing too, we're looking at your data, I mean, such good numbers, and you know, if I remember right, a lot of times on like the I-Ready, when we go by the cohorts, a lot of times there's a grade where those fall back. And the only one in here that really does that is kindergarten, but that kind of holds to first grade, so that's probably more the average for first grade. Is there a reason that you know for that, something that changes between kindergarten and first grade that kind of may cause that?
Well, when I put that data together, I talked to our teachers quite a bit.
Okay.
Anticipating perhaps one may ask a question like that, plus the wanting to know, right? I do think it is safe to say that for this particular year, many of our first graders that are with us this year were not on campus before, and so this is their first school experience being with us this year. For many of them that were on campus last year, this is their first school year coming in. I also think that it is safe to say that last year, when working with the young people in kindergarten, we were meeting them where they were at, having had such a disruptive school year, and consequently, we did not stress to get to the end of the year curriculum. We stressed to go deep with where they were currently at with their learning so that we can then make use of our interventionist and, and other supports tutoring to help close those gaps if they exist.
Okay. Love that. Yeah, and it sounds like, it sounds like you guys and Beerbomb both really took the time to plan how you were going to approach this year, and took a real good systematic approach, so that's awesome. I'm going to end on something that I have always admired about you, which is how you call your students scholars. It's, it's all throughout this presentation too, and I still remember the first time I heard you say that, and it just stuck in my head, the respect that that shows for the students in your school.
Yeah, I, I love them. I even have now little scholar awards that I give out to, to our kids, and it's been absolutely wonderful, because I will select a young student, little scholar, right, that is not only dedicated to their studies, but is a good person, and I like to bring them to the office, and then I call their parent as well. And to see that young person's face light up when they get that is absolutely incredible. So I do that at least once a day, and it's oftentimes the highlight of my day, and I know the parents like it, and the little children at first are wondering why they're coming in to see me, thinking they're in trouble. And so I also try to teach them too, that the principal's office is a place where we problem solve and we celebrate good things.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, that ends my second favorite part of the meeting, it's all downhill from here.
Not with Mike in facilities, we love facilities.
No, no offense, Mike, you're the top of the downhill.
Okay, that's better.
Kitchen ceiling replacements.
It's all about the kids, I'm sorry.
So we solicited bids for the ceiling at Beasley. Reason for the project is the current ceiling is the original to the building, built in 1970. Currently, it's a 12 by 12 interlocked ceiling that is not smooth, clean, and wipeable, and they've been getting a one-point deduct from the Sealestown Health Department for the last couple of years, so this will take care of that issue. Scope of this project will be, includes the ceiling, replacing the lights, some minor HVAC ductwork will be replaced, painting all the walls with a bright white to brighten up the kitchen, and then a pretty good amount of electrical upgrades. Since it is a hard ceiling, a lot of the conduit's exposed, so a lot of that will be reran up into the ceiling, and it'll be hidden, make it a nice cleaner look. And this project will be paid through the School, Food, and Nutrition Department capital budget. So with that said, I'd like to move to approve the lowest qualified bid by Brady Construction in the amount of $58,676, which includes professional and contingency fees. In addition, $10,243, which will cover the electrical panel upgrades, a total of $68,919. That said, any questions?
Is this a vendor we've dealt with before?
Yeah, Brady is actually the one that did the kitchen at Mosaic a few years back. They did a very, yeah.
They did good work there.
Very good work, yes.
Any other questions?
I'm going to move to a previous person.
Can I get a second?
Sir?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. You do always make these so easy, Mike, so thank you.
Easy. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm trying to make up now for...
Trying to revise yourself now.
It's too late for that.
Thank you.
All right, budget development.
Mr. Crutcher couldn't be with us this evening, so you get me, so you get a little bit, a different look at revenue, and to talk a little bit about our revenue sources and kind of walk through each one of those. So, when we talk about local revenue, it is more than property taxes, right? Prop C is a statewide sales tax that's also included as a local revenue, as is tuition that other districts pay to us, food service payments that kids would typically make, or families would typically make, as well as à la carte. The minimal investment earnings that we're getting, have been getting lately on cash in the bank, student activities is all part of that, as well as our community education program. We've got county revenue, which are fines, so when people do things and get fines, you know, get some money from that, and then state assessed railroad and utilities, so railroad tracks, power lines, power plants, all of those kinds of things. From the state, the primary thing is formula, the basic formula. We also get funds for transportation, early childhood special education, parents as teachers, we get a little bit for VOTAC, and a very small amount actually from, for food service from the state. Federal-wise, we actually do get Medicaid dollars for Medicaid services that we provide to Medicaid-eligible students. We do get some money around VOTAC, again, early childhood special ed. Food service is a big federal source of revenue, the Free and Reduced Lunch Program that's administered by the Department of Agriculture. And then we've got our Title programs, Title One, Two, Three, and Four. And then we've got just kind of these other pieces, which is again, some tuition pieces, contracted services, which has a lot for us to do with SSD, and some fees from other districts. So, over time, we've seen that those revenue sources are mostly stable, usually around 75% of our total revenue, give or take a little bit, comes from local sources, about 16 to 17% comes from the state. The fluctuating piece, which then impacts the other percentages, is really the federal piece. Typically, it's in that 3 to 4% range, however, when we have stimulus or recovery dollars or changes in policy, like around the federal lunch program right now, we do see the federal revenue source bump up. So we saw that in 1920, we saw that in 2021, and we'll continue to see that skewed a little bit as we run out these Esser dollars over the next few years. If we take each of those kind of individually and see what's happening with each, with each piece, on the local revenue side, the property tax piece is the biggest portion, which is really just a function of assessed value, tax rate, and whether or not people actually pay their taxes, or the collection rate. And then reassessment happens every other year, and currently, we're in, this will be a, or next year will be a non-reassessment year, so we'll see a little bit more stability in our tax rate and in assessed value. I know these numbers are small, but this is kind of the breakdown of our local revenue and where each of those pieces come from, and what's been happening over time. If you look kind of in that top portion on the far right, you can see that in FY21, our local revenue went down by almost 4%. Look at that as just a number, and you go, what in the world was going on? Well, what was going on was, everybody got free lunch. So, that food service revenue went down from 1.3 million to like 120,000, right? So that was a major drop. So as we look at federal, what happened to federal? It bumped up. So some of those are offsetting pieces, kind of as you look from piece to piece. Our five-year trend in local revenue though, which is somewhat skewed, because we're still, this, we, we lose the initial Prop S revenue in this, for last year when we include the five-year trend. So if you look at FY20, the five-year trend was that local revenue was up 19%. You go, oh, wow. But then, we lose that first year of Prop S in this new five-year calculation, and it's down around that 2.5% mark. However, the three-year trend, it is minus 1.6, right? So we've seen some change over time. As I mentioned, local property taxes are the largest piece within the local piece, and here, the green represents essentially people who pay their property taxes on time, and the purple represents delinquent property taxes, right? But those two together, if we take assessed value, multiply it by the tax rate we get, this is how much in local property taxes we should collect. property taxes we should collect. We look at actual collections of those taxes and we see that between current and delinquent taxes, about 98.4% is about our collection rate kind of over time. But you can kind of see a level of stagnation there in terms of total taxes collected. You see the bump up with Prop R and it's continued to kind of go as we've seen some bumps in both assessed value from new construction but also personal property. And then a little bit later, a little bit more stagnation. As I mentioned before, Prop C is a statewide sales tax. So the more people spend, the more Prop C we get, and that is distributed across the state sort of on a per pupil basis. It's not exactly per pupil. It's weighted ADA piece. And as I mentioned, food service has kind of been down, but as of right now, next school year will be returned to a paid breakfast and lunch. So we'll see, we should see the federal side drop and the local side go up. Overall though, across the country, everybody's expecting that fewer kids will eat as we return to a paid environment. County revenue is just such a small portion of our total revenue. And if you look at it over time, what you see often is it's up a year, it's down a year. It's up a year, it's down a year. So the two pieces, the fines, the fines have varied over the last 10 to 15 years from anywhere from 80,000 to 210,000. So it's a big range, but it's not necessarily a big number. State assessed railroad and utilities kind of go up and down a little bit, but over time, the trend line is overall up. So next year, if the trend continues of up and down, next year should be a slight down. State revenue is, you know, 17 to 18%. As I mentioned before, formula is the biggest piece. We do get transportation funding, but if we look at transportation funding at the state level, the statewide number has been pretty static over time, whereas the cost of buses, the cost of fuel has not been static over time. So back, you know, when I started as a superintendent 20 years ago, or 21 years ago, transportation funding was at about 75% of allowable costs. And now we're in that like 16% range of allowable costs. So funding the same amount as costs go up is just more and more a percentage. And then early childhood, special ed is reimbursed in a year, a year after. So that's kind of how the way that works. So if we look and kind of dig in on the formula, it's a sizable number and we're, we're kind of in this odd position of this is our largest area of guess right now. So part of that is the formula is, just the way it works, this weighted ADA number is super important. It's a heavy factor in that calculation. And weighted ADA in and of itself is a calculation, but essentially, the notion of ADA, average daily attendance, is largely a function of how many kids do you have in your school and what's the attendance in the school, right? So for us, what's been happening with our regular term ADA, as a general rule, it's been going down because our enrollment has gone down, right? So we've tried to offset that over the last number of years by upping our summer school. And we've been able to do that. We kind of stabilized a little bit before COVID hit around that 171 mark. So that's kind of what we're guessing. So as we think about next year and what number is going to run through the formula, that's that's our guess, right? So if we look at that and how that impacts formula dollars, right now, our best guess is that we're going to see a drop of enrollment of just under 30 kids across the district. That's using our, excuse me, cohort survival method. So what's going to happen with ADA next year compared to this year? Well, this year, we had made an earlier estimate that our ADA was going to be just under 8,700. I think that number's going to be, I think that's a low estimate because in using that estimate, we were using attendance from the first semester, which still included quarantine, right? So that pulled attendance down a little bit. We've seen better attendance in the current semester, at least after we kind of went through our COVID wave in January. So that's likely a low estimate. Summer school, we're guessing at 75. So as we look to next year in terms of regular term ADA, our September count is going to be down. But if things remain closer to normal, our overall attendance should be up. So it should be higher than the year that we're currently in. So that's kind of good news. However, the state adequacy target, which is another big multiplier in the formula, is static and will remain static for the next three years. So what that ends up meaning is the state can put minimal money into the formula and say they fully funded the formula because over time, the legislature has manipulated the formula to make it more, to make it cheaper to fund. Then we have another multiplier called the dollar value modifier, which is kind of a cost of living adjustment based on micro and metropolitan areas across the state. So depending on where you live, what county, your DVM is going to be up or down. So when we look at formula dollars for next year and we think about, well, what number in terms of weighted ADA runs through the formula? Well, it can be the prior year ADA plus summer school, or it can be the second prior year, or it can be the year that you're in and the estimate around that. So based on what you have on Eboard, I mean, there's a million dollar swing in terms of what formula money could end up being, or maybe it could be higher, right? As I said, at its simplest, the formula is just weighted ADA times SAT times the dollar value modifier, and then you take out the local effort. As I mentioned, weighted ADA for us is fluctuated but trended downward. Statistic's target is static. DVM is within 6,000, so it's not making a huge difference on the calculation. And local effort is frozen. So if you're multiplying three numbers, two of which are pretty static, one of which is falling, that's overall a declining number. And then you're subtracting the same number from it year after year. So formula dollars are expected to be down. And I've kind of explained all of this. However, where we think today and what we estimate today could be very different from what we estimate at the end of May and June after we have a better picture of how this school year is going to end. And then during next year, we can switch to an estimate at any time so that basic formula revenue can really fluctuate from what we think today to where it's going to be on June 30th of 2023. So it's a, it's a big guess and it's going to continue to be a big guess. Federal revenue, you know, it's, it's again, a small percentage. As I've mentioned, it's higher at times with these stimulus and recovery funds. Talked about the free and reduced lunch. The title allocations, at this point, we don't know what we're going to get, but I always say it's kind of irrelevant because we're going to set the revenues and expenses within those title budgets to be equal. So there's no overall impact on the budget, right? It's kind of a micro budget within the entire budget. And then we've got these ESR reimbursements that we're going to continue to draw down. So maybe that'll be up, maybe that will be a little bit down. You know, our staffing is going to remain about the same in terms of ESR funded positions, but we didn't get necessarily all of those filled all year long. So we may see a bump there and depending on what capital projects we may start in this year, we could see that rise. Because on the ESR, we're putting out those funds and then we're claiming reimbursement and getting that payment back. The other revenue piece is just about a point and a half. So it's such a minimal piece, there's no reason to really spend any time on that. So overall, if we look at those pieces, local revenue, we think should be up overall, especially because food service should make a massive jump if free lunches are, for everyone are gone. County revenue, as I mentioned, up and down. So we think stable to maybe down. State revenue, formula definitely down. Transportation's likely going to be stagnant to down. And then, as we mentioned before, food, federal food service should be down. Everything else should be somewhat stable. So we look at overall revenue going back to 2003, 2004, and we think about what we budgeted and what, what we budgeted and what the board approved in the spring, which can be as late as June 30th, and what happened a year later in terms of actual revenue and how close those estimates were. Overall, over all of that time, we're about a point and a half, or about a point off, right? Generally, we're about a percentage point off on any given year. So if we look at what is on Eboards, you can see that overall, we expect revenue to be down. Now, in, in many ways, that's not surprising. Because we've had a lot of one-time revenue. Some of that one-time revenue is going to continue, some of it not. But overall, we're expecting a decrease overall. So when we look in broad, general terms, we're looking at a budget of about 128 and a half million in terms of revenue. In my mind, we'll continue to adjust revenues as more information is available, especially on the state side. And as I mentioned, historically, we're within about a percent of where we think we're going to be, right? So we're going to be, we're going to be relatively close. I always joke, you know, a 1% error in any of our classrooms gets, gets us a pretty good A. It's just when you look at 1% of 128 million, looks like a big number. But still, percentage wise, we're going to be very close. So with that, I will attempt to answer any questions you might have.
I notice this slide deck has a lot more detail and stuff written out on it than what the one on Eboards does. Can this one get put on Eboards, please?
Yeah, we'll see what we can do.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Next up is strategic plan update, access and opportunity. Good evening.
All right, I have a brief update, just where things are with the progress on the strategic plan. So this is just the big picture pieces. I would like to point out, we are starting to, after spring break, we're going to start working on devising a plan on selecting student representatives to start working on the student bill of rights. And I'm also excited, I always had the opportunity to go to the League of Innovative Schools last week. And so part of that is signing up for a cohort to support. And so I'm going to start working with the Student Voice and Community Collaboration Cohort, which I think will line up perfectly with this work that we're doing with students on the Bill of Rights. Also kind of segue, Ms. Hassler was talking when Dr. Kino was presenting and asking the questions about how they're tracking the participation. Strategy two, actually, on this page is, is that point exactly of tracking that participation and the, and the work that's going on with the academic SEL pieces, the extracurriculars this year. And so the principal is at the final roundtable this, this end of the school year. Will actually be reporting that out as part of their, their reports. And then finally, on attracting the, training a diverse workforce, I know Ms. Hanson and HR team have been working very hard to solidify and coordinate with the colleges and universities around to attract candidates for our open positions. Moving on to the next page of strategies, still working on kind of finalizing and actually developing that needs assessment with the communications department. But one thing that is kind of launching things, the week we come back on March 29th, we, the EL team, some people in my office, Dr. Laurie Tredor Larkin, we were working on, and we're going to have a kickoff on the first time incoming EL kindergarten parent night to where new parents can kind of see what's happening in the district, make connections on how to get information, how the communication structures work, as well as just make those connections with transportation folks, full school, full school food nutrition, the health services department, as well as just understanding how to enroll and register for school. So we're excited about that opportunity. And I think as of last week, we had like 28 families that had already signed up to participate in that event. So I'm really excited about that. We're also working on some ongoing PD, especially around the EL and special ed side. So there has actually already been a training where our EL teachers and all special ed teachers in the district participated in a, in a facilitated training around topics of EL, special ed, and the exiting criteria for access as well as services. Moving on, the establishment of committees for student fees and transportation model, that's going to be worked on before the end of this semester and start those conversations with those stakeholders to really start, you know, arrowing down and figuring out what we can do to support and what opportunities we might have there. And also, I'm really excited that under Brian's facilitation, the calendar committee has agreed, you guys have voted that Eid will be official school holiday day for us in the 2022, 23 school year that will end Ramadan and support our students that are Muslim and celebrate that holiday. And we were going to be celebrating and not in school in session that day. So kids are not losing out on education. On the last part, we begin conversations with elementary and middle school principals about just the opportunities there for SEAL by literacy. As you know, right now, for the last two years, our senior graduating seniors, both high schools have had an opportunity to earn both distinguished SEAL and just the regular SEAL. So we're going to work on getting a process in place to where fifth graders as well as eighth graders in the future will be able to have that honor when they're leaving their elementary and middle schools. And the final part on this page is just working on those culturally responsive pieces. I do know, after talking to some folks in curriculum, that the EL department this year has taken on some professional learning opportunities around cultural proficiencies in the areas of literacy and writing. Then I always like to kind of finish and kind of put that alignment piece with Portrait of a Graduate, our competencies for our social emotional learning surveys that we do twice a year with our students, and just how all of that is kind of intersecting and going to support that access and opportunity piece as far as the strategic plan is lined out for the, the near future. So with that, I'm happy to entertain any questions you may have.
I have a question. On our, just a comment, if, I love the idea that you're doing the EL night that you had mentioned. So I'm just, I was wondering if you could report back to us on how that went. I'd love to know about the engagement and just overall how it went. I think that's fabulous. So.
For sure.
Appreciate it.
Be happy to.
Thanks.
to see this Student Bill of Rights as one of the items. And another that I'm just proud of us as a district and people like yourself taking on so strongly is the bilinguacy, that Missouri SEAL of bilinguacy and everything you've done with that, where we took something that so often people see as, you know, the biggest challenge to, you know, hey, if you're a non-English speaking person coming into our schools, you're going to be bilingual before long, and how positive of a thing that is. So, just, it's just one of those things I think is great, and just to keep going with that.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
For your Student Bill of Rights, what age group are you doing K through 12 in terms of the student ages of the group?
That's to be determined.
Okay.
But I do think we're trying to make sure that we are representing the district and making sure that all voices of our student body are included in it. So, I, we haven't really cut to all the details, but I think there could be some versions of it of what elementary may look like, what middle school and what high school may look like. It's probably going to be an articulated plan.
Great.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next up is the Prop S update.
All right. So, a much shorter update than what we provided at the last meeting. Looking at how we're moving ahead, we did open bids for the security entrance and restroom renovations in the commons of Oakville High School, as well as the stadium restrooms to Oakville High School. We did reduce the scope of that work down quite a bit, and with that, we've been able to stay in the budget estimates. When we opened those bids, the low bidder was a contractor that none of us had ever heard of. So, the references so far on that contractor appear to be pretty favorable, but we do anticipate having a recommendation on the 14th. In, in terms of blades, we did have those bids slated to be due in a couple of weeks, but our architect team would like to, they wanted to push that back another week to see if we can get a few more contractors interested in that, give them a little bit more time to bid, maybe get some higher quality bids. And so, with April 5th, we were shooting to bring that to the board on the 14th. Whether or not we're able to do that within April 12th, it's going to be kind of tight and iffy. Our other projects kind of coming soon, we remain on timeline to do those, so the bids continuing to come in throughout the month of April, and then the big beer bomb project coming in, and we'll see where those numbers land in May, and then hopefully have those to you in early June. Permitting, just Oakville Elementary and that parking lot, and, you know, those multiple properties and getting all into one continues to be a process that seems to drag on and on and on. So, that's holding up our ability to really move forward. That contractor, the board has already accepted that bid. That contractor would like to get started on some work that could be done before school is out, but we got to get all of this property stuff settled in order to get the permit so that they can begin working. So, that's been a little bit of a challenge. We've talked about contingencies, we talked about that extensively at our last meeting, and we talked about, or kind of introduced the notion of this Prop S reprioritization process that we're going to go through. We've done that with our all-hands administrative group, which is about 60 people. We've held two meetings, one on March 8th, one on March 16th. Each of those, we engaged about, we had about 50 people at each of those, providing us some feedback. You received the raw data from those meetings earlier today. We'll be sharing that, that information along with a lot more information with our Facility Steering Committee, our Finance Committee, and our Facility Committee, probably that week after spring break, in a lead-up to a joint meeting of those groups on April 6th, and then bringing some recommendations to the board on the 14th of April. So, finances, you know, interest, we're getting a lot of interest, you know? It, it doesn't seem to be much for the amount of money that we've had invested over this time. But, and we, you know, paid about two and a half million, we had two projects done. So, a lot of work there is just, has been architecture work and engineering, as well as those two projects. But with that, we'll try to answer any questions you might have.
On the raw data for the meeting results, there's a little bit of a question that I have about the baseball field projects. One is the OHS, which I see, it says the project is completed. Is there still follow-ups from that?
Yes. The contractor, I would say, missed a piece of the process they were supposed to get done, and so they're following up with that now.
Okay. Do you expect that to be completed soon?
Monday, Tuesday, Friday.
Okay.
Go back to all of you on Monday. Possible two days.
Is that what in my old job they used to call done, done?
Done.
Okay. There was a little more to it, but I won't go into the extracurricular parts. Yeah, I'm going to get into Melville here in a sec. So, I noticed on the Oakville field, the raw numbers were pretty high as far as doing that work quickly, and it has been done quickly, so maybe that was part of the reason. But when we look at Melville, in the future, bigger font would be nice on this, but my eyes are getting old. Melville, line 45, baseball field project, that one was really knocked down, and I'm not sure, can you explain what that 5 million, maybe it was in the email and I just missed it, the 5 million on the right-hand column there, what that means?
So, essentially, at these meetings, we ask people, we ask the groups three questions. A little bit more than that, but essentially, we were really looking at the answers to three questions. One, what are the three projects that you would keep? Another, what are the projects that you would eliminate or delay? And the third one was, what are the projects that you would delay or eliminate if you had a target amount of 5 million? So, the answers, how groups respond to those two final questions can often be very different. Because when you're asked what to cut, you try not to cut stuff that looks important. When you're asked to cut a number, you go after, people tend to go after the big numbers. So, when we, when we look at the results, the results tend to reflect that. But these results from these meetings aren't recommendations, they're just the results of what came out of those meetings. Recommendations are going to, are going to come out of the April 6 meeting.
Okay. So, even though this one, negative 13 in the far right, that doesn't mean it's actually going to get cut, because I think we're looking at safety issues and some other problems with that field, if I'm hearing right from people.
Well, I, I would say that there's probably not a day goes by when we're trying to figure out how not to cut anything.
Sure.
But whether or not that's going to get to be the case is still to be determined, right? I mean, we've, we've done two projects, we've got one other bid. The bids that we see over really the next few weeks, and especially the beer bomb bid, will be pretty big determiners in terms of what we think going forward looks like. So, where we land on recommendations, it's, that's, that's why we're involving so many people.
Right.
I mean, sure, I have ideas of what I was, what I would do if I was just doing it all, but we're, we used a lot of people to determine what projects we were going to do, so we're trying to engage a lot of people to figure out what projects we made to layer or eliminate.
Sure. That makes a lot of sense. It probably makes a lot of sense, too, to look at it with another lens of if there are safety things, because even if people don't realize those, and they could knock those back a little bit, but that could be something that puts a priority on it, just a safety first kind of an aspect, which I haven't been out there to see what's going on, but I keep hearing things from people. So, something to keep an eye on, I think. Pay attention to.
Everybody has the pet project that they want done.
Yep. I want interventionist, but that's not in here. So, all right. That's all I had.
I actually have a question. Given that we are having problems with Oakville's fields, and we are about to have bigger undertakings as we move forward, and there's so many people involved, and you're an educator, and Dr. DeKemper's an educator, and Mike's the facility manager, I forgot your exact title, sorry. But do we actually have, so, the processes, the architects and the engineers are mostly involved, then we get all the bids. Who oversees the whole undertaking of all the projects to make sure it is correct from start to finish? And are we, I mean, is that just sort of a collaboration of everybody? Or do we have one process so that we know that these projects are going to get done correctly and timely, and withhold the final payments till we make sure they're 100% correct, and all those other good little details that a specified project manager might do, but we don't have one of those on staff that I know of?
So, what we've done, and Mike and Chad can chime in, over the last couple of years, or year anyway, as we've taken on more projects, because that's always been a challenge for us during the summer, even before Prop S, is the amount of work that we can actually oversee and manage. So, we've kind of entered into this model, if you will, with these, having multiple smaller projects, where we're taking different team members, our, some of our lead folks in facilities, and managing the projects that are kind of within their wheelhouse of expertise. So, for example, you know, our, Russ Suda is, his background is HVAC, so he tends to manage the HVAC projects. That's, Mike's background is kind of in the, in the same area. So, that, that's kind of what we've been doing in order, partly because if we go back 20 years ago, plus, the word was the project manager really took control of Prop P, and that kind of got out of hand, and expenses got out of hand, and it was not another 5% to 7% in expenses that we wanted to add.
I mean, I just, more from a protection standpoint on all calibers, on your mental health and your job of what you have, everything you have to take care of, Mike's, Dr. DeKemper, whoever is working on Russ Suda, whoever has to manage that project, is then also taking away from all the other things that they have to do. And so, I feel like there is room for error to some degree, but as long as, I guess, it's under control and everybody is collaborating, and probably most importantly, withholding that final payment till we know for sure that everything's right, because.
And can I have more of the last payment for the ESSR?
Good.
If you have a final payment, we're hungry for that.
Right. Perfect. So, anyway, I was just thinking of how things could go wrong, you know? If we're having problems with the first project we did, it's a little scary moving forward. But, I mean, that happens, I get it, it happens everywhere, so.
The other thing that's, I mean, it's not odd with what we've got going on, it's that we have so many small projects that are going on.
Right.
Right? So, it's not like we're building a school and it's all in one bid. We've got all of these little pieces, right? So, the Forter HVAC project, which is complete, done by one contractor, Oakville Ball Field's done by a contractor, Rogers HVAC, that's somebody. So, OES parking lot, that's somebody. The work at OHS will be somebody else.
Right.
And some of those flow through our architects, and some do not. Again, in order to hold down costs, because some of them, we're just working directly with our engineers that we've always worked with, rather than paying the architects to work with our engineers that we're used to working with. We've pulled out a number of projects from the architect's umbrella.
Right. Yes, and I appreciate everybody's work on all of this. It's a lot of work, a lot of planning, a lot of oversight. I'm sure a lot of you don't sleep at night worrying about what's going to happen next, but, so we appreciate it, and I know it's, you've had massive problems with the county and permitting and all those things, but, so thank you. Just keep up the good work.
It's not just permitting with the county, it's why they want us to plant shrubs under trees that are 50 feet tall, or other trees, under trees that are 50 feet tall, because it's in some little ordinance somewhere. So, we're going to spend $40,000 in bushes that are going to die, so we fight that stuff.
Can you plant them and then move them?
Well, I, I joke that I'm going to get those little bee trees from the Department of Conservation, you know, those little bee things that come like this, plant them all and then mow them.
There we go.
But they're supposed to be a certain height, all that, so.
All right. Anybody else? COVID-19 update is next.
All right. Really don't have any data to share. Our data sources are, have almost dried up for all intensive purposes, or we're just have a couple of data pieces that we do continue to watch. We're watching the CDC's new metrics, which are looking good, and we're wa, we continue to watch the cases within our buildings, which are pretty much at an all-time low right now. So, the, we've reworded the resolution for your consideration. The, the, and the impact, we believe, is the same, operating under the same threshold, it's just, just some wording changes there. But overall, maintaining the 1.5% threshold to re-mask if we should see any localized spikes, but we've not been close for weeks, so. I'll try to answer any questions.
What are the wording changes?
Oh, that's, so, if you look at the, the resolution that we've been using for the year, it started with the notion of we were operating under a mask mandate, and then we slowly kind of put those metrics in there as a way to back away. So, this wording has mask optional as the default position, and to re-mask if we threw, if we went over those thresholds.
Okay.
And the federal mandate on buses is gone, but we did maintain the mandate in our nurse's office as health facilities are still mostly under mask mandates.
I wanted to ask some philosophical questions, so that our community can kind of understand where our head is at. So, as you said, cases are right now at an all-time low, and there could be an argument made that we don't need this anymore, or that we could raise the threshold numbers, and I'd like to know your thoughts on reasons to stick with the 1.5, if there's anything legally from, I forget which number the law was, but the one that said only so many of these could be created in a certain period of time, if that comes into play? If there's a benefit to sticking with something being in place as opposed to having to reinstate something, whatever it is that the reasoning is?
So, there's a broad lack of clarity around the law that the legislature passed last spring. last spring. I mean, it's still debatable among some of whether that applies to schools at all, but there's this notion that once you completely lift anything, then is it a six-month lag before you can do anything again? So, our philosophy, if you will, has been to maintain it every 21 days. Remember the calendar that we produced a while back? Actually, do need a meeting that, you know, before we get to the 14th, to reconsider this again, that way, that if something, if there was a new variant or something, we still have those thresholds to come back to, and we don't trigger any six-month window of which we could, could or couldn't do anything depending on interpretation, because, I mean, we're certainly in a, at least a public opinion litigious environment. People like, like to sue and get in the news for suing, and then I follow up on those suits all the time, so, you know, in, in many respects, we're still in the middle of a lawsuit on this, although, you know, when the initial lawsuits were filed and then followed up with requests for temporary restraining orders in three counties, districts in three different counties, the word out of one of those, one of the most recent hearings, which happened the day after a district had lifted their mask mandate, supposedly, the judge was very much, his attitude was, why are we here? And the Attorney General's office was, still going down this process, and the judge is like, but why are we here? So, there's just a lot of legal uncertainty, so, we have tried to stay on the safe side, so we want to continue to stay on the safe side.
Okay. Anyone else?
I mean, it's been functionally doing what it's supposed to have been doing for the last five weeks, which is mask recommended when we're at the numbers we're at. If we remove it, we take the chance we can't put it back for six months. If we leave it where it is and at least tweak the number, it still accomplishes what it's doing right now. So, unless that number magically jumps up because of whatever happens, it's going to continue to function as it is theoretically to the end of the school year. And Fox and Lindbergh are, unless they changed it in the last week or so, are taking the same tactic, our two next-door neighbors. Their number, their, Lindbergh is 1.5% for their metric, Fox is 2. So, we're at least matching what Lindbergh is, and Fox is half a percent higher.
Okay, there's no harm in leaving the S's.
But then, the other part of this is, if we do see some kind of aberration, who prepares?
Right, it's, it's going to basically, we've just taken the wording and sort of inverted the way it was before, because before, it was kicking in to remove the masking requirements. This is inverting it, saying that they'll come back if we hit that metric. So, I think it's simplifying the wording to make it, we're assuming this will continue to not be required, but if it is required, this is what happens. So, I mean, I agree with the wording change because it inverts the purpose that seems appropriate now.
Okay.
Does this mention the public transportation?
No.
No, because that...
Because that, that's gone now.
That was removed.
It, it ended up getting, they pulled it a week earlier than what was expected.
I'm good, making a motion to approve this resolution as presented?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. All right, next up is action items by consent. You want to pull 7A?
7A, please, I'd like to pull.
Okay, any others? Got a motion to approve 7B through 7E?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
There's an app that I've left off, it's on our boards, it's just on the slide.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah.
It's an MSD agreement.
It's on our sheet.
Right, it's on the slide.
Well, hold on a second.
Oh, yes, I saw, I read it.
Yeah, it's an MSD agreement.
The MSD, yeah.
I didn't catch it, hold on a second.
Letting them, letting them use their, our, their, their own sewers, oh yeah, right?
Yeah.
Got to go somewhere.
We needed this for that? All right, so can I get a motion to approve 7F?
B through F.
Oh, yeah, we already did.
We already did B3.
Yeah.
So, can I get a motion to approve 7F?
I'll make a motion to approve 7F.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. All right, can I get a motion to approve 7A?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
I abstain, I want to abstain, that's why I pulled.
Right, I'm doing that last.
Okay, thank you.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All abstaining?
All abstain, thank you.
No problem. There's a method to my madness, it just takes a while to come through. We're all mad here. All right. That was a pretty long action items by consent. Communications, standing committee reports. How about if we go from around the horn, starting with Jeff, counterclockwise?
One thing we had today was a policy meeting right before this one. It reviewed policy GDBDA, which is the perfect tenants policy. We had bounced it back and forth a few times just clarifying the wording, and I think we now have it clarified, so it's probably going to come back at the next meeting for approval. We also had a, beginnings of a classroom 1000 library policy from the presentation we had a couple of months ago, to try and incorporate the classroom library items into either a separate policy or incorporate it into an existing policy. It looks like, as it stands right now, we're going to try and put it into policy IA for instructional materials, and that was what we discussed in policy.
Great, thank you. Jean?
I unfortunately was unable to attend the Finance Committee meeting, and I was sick for the Communications meeting. However, I did attend the March 7 legislative forum in Jefferson City, where I was, we had very successfully, we learned about so many bills that had been presented, and that of the 2,200, roughly 45 bills that were brought up this year in the, in the House, and that probably 10% of them had to do with education in some, some way or another. And so, we got to the opportunity to speak to some, after the presentation, we went over to the Capitol, Peggy, and Jeff, and Larry, and myself, and we spoke in person to our, two of our representatives, where I still live here, Representative Jim Murphy and Representative Michael Donald. And of course, we, at that point, were only there to open lines of communication, which is what we hope to do all along in this, and, you know, not to drill, you know, try to drill in any one position, but to keep open the lines of communication, so that we always have a, an opportunity to express how any of these bills that they're looking at can affect our school district. And we also made it clear that we would like to have an opportunity for them to come to some events at the district, where we used to have the Legislative Breakfast every year. I'd like to see if we can get that back up and rolling again. It's too late for this year because they're already on the spring break this week, but perhaps next year, we can get one planned and have each and every representative, and, you know, Senator and State Representative that is over our school district present, that would be the idea. I also spoke with the Representative, the House Minority Leader, Crystal Quaid, Representative Sarah Hensiger, the Committee Chairman of the Elementary and Secondary Education Committee, Chuck Bassi, Senator Beck by phone, but of course, we talk all the time, he was lovely, big deal, Senator Shug, and four of the, what are called the 11, and these are 11 women of the set that are crossing all partisan lines to make bills pass. They've gotten together on and bonded over, you know, whatever they could, via dinners or meetings, or, and then finally, ultimately, they wrote a book, and it's called Upan 2, and each and every fourth grader in the state of Missouri is going to get one of these books. Senator Beck has ordered them, and he said he'd let me know, but we receive them, and I offer our help in distributing them to our fourth graders. So, this is a really rare opportunity for the Senate to work in a functioning style with these 11 women senators who are really, really going to get, they, they have been getting things done. So, I, I suggest you keep an eye on them, call the 11.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Great.
Were they, is it every fourth grade class, or every fourth grader?
Student.
Student, wow.
Fourth grade student.
I, I missed that.
I thought it was, yeah.
Yeah, that's interesting, that's amazing.
If I'm wrong, I apologize, but that's the way I should do it, so.
Yeah.
That's all I have, I'm sorry to be so lengthy.
No, that was great.
No, thank you.
Mine really follows Jeff and Jean. I was at Policy Tonight, and Finance, and the Capitol, and Jean did a great job of educating Jeff and I on the ins and outs of meeting with people and getting in there and advocating for our district, but I would be remiss if I didn't announce, and I know a lot of, most people in this room already know this, about Larry being awarded the Carter, is this right, Carter D. Ward Excellence in Advocacy Award, so, he was the highlight of our luncheon, and I think...
They're not worried, but they made mention of the other three people on the team that he was on that morning, and we were like scratching our heads, like, why didn't Larry get mentioned now? Well, then we found out.
That's because he was getting awards.
Yeah.
Send the best for last.
And so, I have to admit that one of the other, they had the three other people stand, and so I quickly snuck out for a second, for a break, and then I come back in, and Larry's up there, I'm like, oh no, nobody saw me leave, no. So, I did miss the first few comments, but otherwise...
You probably heard him here.
But anyway, otherwise, really impressive, and thank you for all your work you've done all through the years, and I hope you don't go very far, because we're going to need your mentorship and knowledge moving forward when it comes to this stuff.
That's for a cheap little trial.
All right.
All right, my main one was Finance. Biggest thing on that, I think everybody already knows, is just looking forward. We've got challenges ahead of us in the operations budget, and Prop S, we know, in the Capitol budget, but something to really watch out for, so, going to be watching you guys. That's really all I have.
Communications, Larry and I were at, we reviewed the engagement through many different media sources, showing kind of where we're on target, where we're exceeding target, areas that they have targeted for growth, and others just to keep things status, and talked quite a bit about Parent Square, and how great that is working, and those teachers who have started to engage in that, how simple it is, and to see, expect to see expansion of that over this next year, as they receive, all of the teachers receive training. So, I think that's very exciting, because it's a great tool, so.
Well, this is the last time I need to talk about that, because so, I'm on the list, all 482 votes were tracked. Jeff told, first of all, Jeff is taking part of the skeleton line, it is on.
Okay, let's try that. I cleared my throat. Jeff has already taken a lot of the skeleton that I put together, and has just done a bang-up job of tracking everything that's going on. So, what you're going to have is a really good, comprehensive summary of what's going on, what's being, being moved between the different houses and where the statuses are. So, my hat's off to what Jeff has done with this. Where we're sitting right now, it looks like out of 1,471 bills, there's 326 bills in the House that affect us in one way or another. There's 60 of them that hit curriculum, and most of it's very restrictive. 51 that affects revenue, because a lot of it is where they're going to give tax breaks, or where they're going to give, you know, grace. 27 that affect the elections, and it's primarily aimed at school boards, to move them to November, make them partisan, and elect for, one year and two years back, come and do three. It's, it's, it's probably the worst I've ever seen, the attack on public education boards. Safety and security is about 23, so that's picked up. Lot, and a lot in the health area, and obviously, because of COVID, there's been a lot of that. Senate side, there's 122 bills that I think we're tracking, almost the same type of breakdown. So, there, after all of that, there's only seven bills that I've, that I see that have gotten out of the House, over to the Senate. The only thing that's made it through is the, is the, I think it was the ESSER bill, 1.9 bill.
Yeah, that was the only one that really made it all the way to the finish line, but there's definitely stuff that's flipped over to the other side, and they're chatting about it right now.
Yeah, it, it looks to me like there is very little that's going to get out of the Senate. And I think, to tip my hat off to what, what Jean was saying, the coalition of the, of the women in the Senate is like something I've never seen, and that's, I think they will probably dictate whatever gets passed this year, and it's not going to be the, the group out of St. Charles that's really blocking everything. It's, there could be some good legislation to come out of the Senate, and I think it'll be because of that coalition. The only other thing I'll talk about is, there's somebody who's pretending to be our Attorney General, who has decided he's going to go after a couple more education organizations, and I, I can, I can only quote what the lawyers for those organizations have said, and they both use the term frivolous, and there was no cause for these suits, they're all initiated by the Attorney General. So, that's going to be, I think, on the advocacy radar for the rest of the year. So, that's it.
Patrick, bring us home.
The McKelvey Sports Committee had no report, because I'm very happy, all of our spring student athletes are trying out, since the last board meeting, there hasn't really been much. Obviously, we highlighted all the results of the seasons, but very excited for baseball to start, boys volleyball, there's some water polo. I do want to say one thing about communications, although I'm not on the committee, I saw that Hunter went to the St. Louis Islamic Center, and he has a story coming about that, and Eid, we had kind of talked about the calendar committee. I'm very, just very excited to see that piece, so, can't wait for that, and just wanted to shout out Hunter, I'm going to be very interested in that piece, and spring sports, can't wait. I'll definitely have something for you on April 10th.
14th.
14th, I tried, reorg, no committee meetings, I apologize.
You can do it on 10th, we may not be here, but that's okay.
I'll catch you down video.
I'll write a report for you, okay?
Perfect.
You can be the community member on that new committee.
Okay, thank you. Open period for patron comments on non-agenda items, we did not have anyone sign up. So, can I get closed session?
Motion to enter a closed session meeting for the purpose of reading of minutes of previous meetings, and corrections and approval of same and other items under the Missouri Revised Statute 610.021, subsections 1 through 21, and 610.022, subsections 1 through 6, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting particular employees, 610.0213, preparation for negotiations with employee groups, 610.0219, and individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applications for employment, 610.02113. Legal action, cause of action or litigation, 610.0211. Jeff?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Tori, yes. Larry?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes. We're in closed, five minutes.
Larry?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.